I just pushed the button, so you'll start seeing attendees populate.
Okay, wonderful. There they are, a few, a couple of those popping in. Excellent. All right, well, if you are just joining us tonight, welcome. I'm calling to order the special joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. And I will ask a vice chairperson of the commission and Brendan Eichoff to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let my desk get up. Okay, ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please. Commissioner Anderson, I do not see. Commissioner Kronza.
Present.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner McIntyre. Commissioner Smith. And Commissioner Brendan Eichoff. Okay. Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Darris. Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present. Thank you. Well, several of you are on tonight. If you're watching or you're on the phone listening tonight, we do welcome you. And if you would like to, let's see, I don't know, there's a phone number here, but I don't know that it helps me to give anyone that phone number right now, Luke, right? We're not on channel 20, we're not on KPRL, so that phone number isn't terribly helpful. For those of you on the webinar, for some reason, you have any computer issues and you want to speak during the time that's set aside for public comment, let me give you that phone number. It's 669-900-6833. And actually, let's put this in the chat, Luke, and then there's the webinar ID number. I can put that in there. There we go. Okay, so anybody, any of the attendees, if you can see that chat. If they can't look, if maybe you could get it to wherever they could, in case somebody needs to call in and they don't have audio. Okay, perfect. And then what else was I going to mention? Oops. I'm wondering, do we want to bring like Genevieve and possibly Kelly Gleason into being panelists?
Yes, we should do that at this time because I'll be wanting to introduce them as soon as we start our presentation.
Okay.
Looks like she's in, looks like Genevieve is in the attendees list already there. Actually, we may have already transferred her over. Oh yeah, she's in as a panel.
Okay, so she's in now. Let's, and we might want to bring, hi Genevieve, we might want to bring Kelly over too. She might be going, no, leave me where I am. So we are here for one, one purpose tonight. That is our inclusionary housing strategy study session and really the, the purpose tonight, we're looking specifically as it says at inclusionary housing. So we're not, we're not here looking at zoning or where to put different affordable housing. We're not debating merits of tiny homes or anything like that. We're looking at something very specific and this gives all of us as commissioners and council the opportunity to ask questions, get some information and help really sort through this pretty, pretty complicated issue. But I know Genevieve and Phil can make it, can make it very clear for us. And then it also gives the commission and the council the opportunity to provide feedback. And it also gives the planning commission the opportunity to hear from the council and really understand our values and priorities and the direction that we're going. And so with that, I will go ahead and hand it over to Director Dunsmore for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening everyone tonight. Well, it was recently that we adopted our, adopted our city housing element. And out of that housing element came one of many different policies and programs. And one of those most important ones was for the city to take a look at our affordable housing program. And for us to look at ways to bring our, our affordable housing program up to date with state policies. Now, Genevieve Shara with MIG has helped us out tremendously with our housing element of our general plan. And she's also here tonight to really guide us through this affordable housing discussion. And tonight, we're not looking for specific actions. We're really wanting to have a discussion, invite the public. But we want to refine some direction tonight so that staff can go back and we can begin building affordable housing program or not. We can begin looking at some of these topic areas. Now, the report you had did provide you a lot of background information. And tonight, we're going to try and boil that down and try and really get out of maybe this meeting, some specific ideas and goals of where we should go in the future. So before I go on too long, I'd like to introduce Genevieve and we'll start with the presentation. And I think we can have you share your spring, Genevieve, or if not, if that doesn't work out, I also have the presentation on my end as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, rest of the, the planning commission and city council here tonight and the public. And we're excited to talk a little bit more, summarize some of the key things that, that we presented in, in a background report. So I'll try and distill that information and provide that again for anyone who wasn't able to get to that. So that we can all kind of start from a common ground for our discussion about a path forward. So I'll, I'll just touch a little bit on, on the 2021 housing element. And then we'll dig into the inclusionary housing memo that was provided, some specifics about case law and the state law and, and what's, what's allowed and what the city can do. And then we'd like to take a little bit of a look at what Atascadero's existing policy has been and some of the outcomes from that. And then we'll spend a lot of time tonight talking about what are the affordable housing tools that are related to inclusionary housing? And the pros and cons of those, some of the specifics of those and get feedback and have a conversation around those. But in the end, this really is a discussion. And some of the key questions that we want to ask tonight are, what do we want to achieve with an inclusionary housing program? What's, what's really our goal here and get direction from the council and planning commission on that topic? And understand what's not working somewhat from the background research that we've, that we've provided and discuss what could change moving forward. So looking back to the, to the housing element, the housing element was adopted back in November of 2020, as you'll remember, and it has been reviewed by HCD one more time. So state law requires that we send it back up, adopted to the state for their review. And the state came back and said, great job. Everything complies with state law. You're good to move forward. So congratulations on that. The city will continue to track the housing element annually with the annual report process, tracking the number of units. And each of the programs that are listed in the housing element and progress towards those goals. Oops, sorry, jumping ahead here. So through the housing element process, just wanted to, to bring, bring us back to some of that input that we received in that housing element process. Because it is somewhat relevant to our discussion tonight. We received a lot of really good input back January of 2020. We had a great meeting with folks where we sat down and talked about what were the key housing issues in Atascadero? What were some of the constraints and what were some creative ideas to address those constraints? So that insight and that input was really valuable and integrated into the housing element and reflected in some of the programs that are in the housing element. Participants noted particular constraints and those, those constraints were identified in the housing element and reflected in programs to remedy some of those constraints. We also heard from that process that there was a need for more affordable housing, but that it's difficult to provide under the current structure. So apologies, my computer has a lag. So in the housing element, as Phil indicated, there is a program to evaluate the city's inclusionary housing policy that exists today. And to consider replacing it with an inclusionary housing ordinance. So inclusionary housing ordinances, programs, policies, these are intended to reverse what's considered exclusionary zoning policies that precluded more affordable, low cost housing from certain areas and certain communities. So that's why it's called inclusionary. It's, it's intended to, to react to some of those policies that, that really precluded affordable housing development from happening. So inclusionary housing generally just as a, what is it? Inclusionary housing is a policy or program that requires developers to provide a proportion or a percentage of the units that they're developing for affordable housing, to, to reserve them for affordable housing, for, for households that make less than the, the average median income for the, for the county. So these ordinances, policies are very common throughout California, more than 170 jurisdictions. And that, that data point was a bit old and many jurisdictions have adopted in the past five years. So a lot of jurisdictions throughout the state have inclusionary housing programs in place. So there's a bit of nuance. There's a, a lot of laws and a lot of legislation happened in the past decade. Many lawsuits, lawsuit and laws have affected inclusionary housing and the landscape that, that we're working within in the past decade or so in California. So this starts back with the Palmer case back in, in 2009. So the finding from this case really changed everything. It really upended how many jurisdictions had been implementing their inclusionary housing ordinances. So this finding found that it conflicted with another state law called the Costa Hawkins Act, which requires cities to allow developers to set the rental rates for their new and units that are vacated. So that decision determined that many cities couldn't implement their existing inclusionary housing policies. They could only implement the ones for, for sale units. They couldn't implement for, for a significant period of time there, any rental requirements, requirements to provide affordable rental units in rental projects. So the Patterson case, that same year was, was, was nuanced, but, and a little bit complicated. But this one, in the end, found that inclusionary in lieu fees, so in the case that instead of providing those units on site, a developer pays a fee in lieu of providing that unit on site. That case found that those fees were considered an impact fee rather than the city's right to just have land use controls. So what that meant was that a nexus study would have to be done to implement that impact fee. And that nexus would have to show what the, the cost differential is and justify essentially that impact fee. However, this was all upended again in 2015 and that the Patterson case was overturned by the, the San Jose case in 2015. So that lawsuit provides the precedence now that cities can use in developing their inclusionary housing ordinances and implementing what they have and finds that they're not impact fees. They're actually land use controls that the city has the absolute right to do under their police powers. So now no nexus study is needed, but there's some findings from that law that were useful and helpful moving forward. That those fees can't be unreasonable and that they can't deprive a property owner of their fair and reasonable return on their investment. So a little bit of guidance, but a lot of backwards movement and forwards movement. And in the end, the Palmer fix legislation from 2018 kind of brings us back to where we were in 2008, where cities can have inclusionary housing policies, but there's a bit more firmer ground on which to stand because all of this legislate, all the lawsuits have kind of come to a final conclusion. And the legislature has cleaned up those conflicts between the Costa Hawkins Act and what folks can do for inclusionary housing. So the Palmer fix adopted in 2018, undoes that conflict and sets, sets guidance moving forward within that legislation too, on what has to be done to have a defensible inclusionary housing ordinance. So let's look then at the Atascadero's inclusionary housing policy today. So back in 2003, the city adopted an inclusionary housing policy. This was an implementation measure of the general plan from 2001. And this program is, is unique to some others around the state in that it subjects only legislative actions to comply with the inclusionary housing ordinance. So legislative actions, those are those actions that change the zone or, or, and, and also have to go to city council for approval. So a zone change, a specific plan, a plan development, those are legislative actions.
I want to add one thing in here, Genevieve, real quick, because I did do a typo, typo in the staff report. I'm looking at the front page there now and realized that we put in here that a conditional use permit or subdivision map is a legislative back. It's really not. It's only those legislative backs, like you're mentioning, rezoning of a property, for example. So I wanted to clarify that about the staff report.
Thank you. Yeah. So it is, it is a pretty narrow, yeah, CUP would open it up a lot. But it is a pretty narrow focus on, on what projects actually have to comply with this. And so because of this too, it's, it, it can become, you know, kind of confusing in the way that it's implemented because a project that is, for instance, a larger multifamily project, but that is compliant with the underlying zoning, wouldn't require any affordable housing to be provided. Whereas a small, you know, a small planned development for a small lot subdivision type thing, that could apply because they're asking for that, that legislative action on it. So the actual implementation of the policy may be seen sometimes as, as just kind of uneven because of that. The other factors in the existing policy, 20%, so for those legislative actions, actions, 20% of units must be affordable. Those units are allowed on top of whatever the underlying zoning would allow. So it's not, it's not taking away those units. More units would be allowed, kind of a density bonus. And then there's some requirements for who can pay in lieu fees and who must provide those sites on, those units on site. So projects of one to 10 units can pay an in lieu fee or build the units if they choose, but projects of 11 units or more must build the units on site in order, or the council could approve or receive a, the council would have to approve a modification otherwise to let them pay in lieu fees. But that process is available for those units, 10, those 10 and under units. So looking back at, at history, between 2003 and 2007, the program produced 144 affordable units, including a significant number of, of very low and low units, which these are the units that are really hardest to produce. They require further subsidy from, from a variety of sources and they just tend to be fewer and farther between. So a total of 34 very low, 31 low and 78 moderate units were produced in that time. Between 2008 and 2020, however, only three deed restricted units were provided through the inclusionary policy. So after 2007, so that's not to say no affordable housing was produced in the community during that time. Affordable housing was produced by nonprofit developers that weren't seeking, and that didn't have a legislative action and weren't seeking any type of, of change to zoning. And they were also provided through density bonus provisions on an incremental basis. Um, let's see. I apologize, that didn't move forward for you, but it did for me. So now you see the numbers that I was just talking about there. Here we go. So just a summary again, 144 up to 2007 and three in the latter part of the year. I'm going to jump to the next screen. So since 2003, in addition to those units though, the city has collected over a million dollars in, in lieu fees that can be used to support affordable housing construction and finance affordable housing construction offsite. In addition, the city does have three projects in the pipeline now that are legislative actions. So these are subject to the inclusionary housing requirements. The first is the Grand Oaks project. All of their units are actually considered affordable as they're affordable by design. But because they're going through this, well, they're going through the legislative action and they're also getting a density bonus. Three of those units will be deed restricted, moderate income units. And two other projects have been in the pipeline for, I think nearly a decade now, the Hartburg and the principal projects will provide additional affordable housing, 12 of the very low and low units and 10 moderate income units. So looking at the, the total in the pipeline, we're looking at between 2003 and today, considering those in the pipeline, a total of 147 units provided through the inclusionary policy. Oops, sorry, 147 was the, the total plus the pipeline is 169. And so it's also helpful to take a peek at what those RENA targets are. So if you recall back to the housing element, these are the regional housing needs allocations or the RENA. And this is the, the number of units that are identified by the state and the local regional government, council of governments, that each jurisdiction has a target of new housing to accommodate. And this is across the straight state, every city has an obligation to show that you have the adequate zoning in place to accommodate this new, new housing in your community based on, on statewide housing needs. So this, this chart shows the progress towards meeting those goals for the previous housing element cycle. So between 2014 and 2019, the city was very successful in meeting the above moderate income units. 188% of that target was achieved. The moderate income units also extremely successful, 250% of those targets were met. So exceeded quite a bit there. The low income units, almost half of that target was met. So not able to achieve the, the full goal. And then we often consolidate the extremely low and low, the extremely low and very low into one category, in which case about half of that target is met there with, that's my math, 48 out of 98 units.
Genevieve? If I could, to be really clear, especially for those that might be new to RENA, the goal is, it's, it's a little deceiving. The, the goal isn't to build those. I mean, yes, we'd like to have those built. But what we have to do is, is set aside and have that available and we've met that. So like I want, it, it needs to be clear that we've actually met our regional housing needs allocation during that fifth cycle. And we're simply showing the progress that the private industry came in and built towards that allocation.
Thank you for that point of clarification. So our obligation from a city's perspective, the city must show adequate sites to accommodate that. And the city did do that throughout the last cycle, cycle, adequate sites were made available and stayed available. Although the private market did not accommodate, did not meet those needs in the very low category and low categories. Correct. So, and moving forward, the city will be tracking these progress. And, but as of this point, there are, there are no penalties for not achieving these goals because it is done by the private market. State law is constantly changing and the state is further moving towards trying to get these goals met. So we don't know what, what to see in the future. But a really good point to clarify, the city is fully in compliance with the housing element and from the previous cycle and this new cycle moving forward.
Thank you.
So some key considerations there that are kind of helpful to think about moving forward that have changed the landscape of, you know, how, how affordable housing is built and how inclusionary housing affects Atascadero since the policy was first established back in 2003. So some of these are statewide and some of these are local. The first statewide consideration is a density bonus law. So this, the, the state density bonus is amended almost annually, sometimes with multiple legislative acts. And it is a tool that is constantly moving and evolving through the state legislature to further increase incentives and further limit the way that jurisdictions can use it as far as constrained developers. So the intent is really provide as much incentive for developers to use density bonus ordinances moving forward to encourage both market rate and, and especially affordable housing. So that process is likely to continue to move forward in, in this, at least this legislature's cycle and, and upcoming legislature cycles moving forward to increase incentives associated with the state density bonus law. So that's been a process that we've seen and we don't see that slowing down. The other statewide consideration is the Housing Accountability Act, along with the Housing Crisis Act and a lot of this other legislation that is out there that is really drastically moving cities away from legislative approvals and other discretionary approvals. So really looking at ways to encourage or require cities to streamline development approvals for housing and especially affordable housing and provide less discretion towards those projects. And then finally, just a consideration is the loss of redevelopment. So about, I think it was about eight years ago now, the state ended redevelopment for local jurisdictions. So with that, there's just a loss of local funding sources for affordable housing. That was a primary funding source that many cities relied on to create more affordable housing in their communities. And that's not there anymore. It also provided kind of a framing structure for, for affordable housing for communities. So and then locally, things to think about, you know, since 2003, a lot of those big developable land areas have been developed. So there's not a lot of those larger areas that could provide more economies of scale for development. The high cost of construction, this is a local and kind of a statewide impact as well. But the high cost of construction impacts the, the level of development as well. And then in Atascadero, it's, it's also important to note that your topography can be kind of difficult, especially for smaller sites that can limit the ability to provide extra units. And so then the, the benefits of a density bonus or other kind of incentive like that are not really readily available because the topography constraints that out. So I wanted to go over some of the affordable housing tools or inclusionary housing that are in the inclusionary housing camp. And the, the memo that was provided provides some of the pros and cons of each of these different types of tools. And often jurisdictions will find that, you know, a comprehensive plan that includes a variety of different tools may be the best bet for, for actually achieving affordable housing goals. But here's, here's the first tool, the inclusionary housing ordinance that, that we wanted to touch on tonight. And so this again is, is that tool that requires developers to provide a portion of affordable housing on site. There's, oh, there's alternatives to that provision of housing on site that are required by the law, such as providing a fee in lieu or providing those units offsite or dedication of land, other kinds of things that, that could accommodate that need. But some of the pros and cons we'd like to go over too. So one of the pros of an inclusionary housing ordinance has been noted to be that affordable units in market rate developments can be constructed more quickly than nonprofit affordable units because they need to kind of layer their timing. They may need to get tax credits. So just coming online as part of a market So just coming online as part of a market rate project could provide more affordable housing quicker. Dispersion, construction of affordable units throughout different neighborhoods can meet a wider array of housing needs through different housing types that are provided through the variety of different housing developments that are moving forward. And that can just expand housing choice for for lower income families. The presence of affordable units with each, within each residential project also just provides more opportunities for residents to remain within the community. So some of the drawbacks do relate. And these, this is just kind of common throughout these types of things where it is an additional cost of development. It relates to how an inclusionary requirement can increase the cost of development. And as a result, there is the potential for a reduction in residential construction. Some studies have found that inclusionary housing policies and ordinances are not a significant impact on residential construction. And that the key impact on whether, on the number of permits that are applied for in any jurisdiction is really tied to the market and not to an inclusionary policy. There are also studies that have shown that there has has been an impact. So I think there's, there's multiple schools of thought and things to consider there. The goal of an inclusionary requirement is to produce affordable housing. So that goal is not achievable if those increased construction costs due to the inclusionary requirement are too high and then discourage residential development. So it's really important to set those at the right level. So a carefully constructed inclusionary housing ordinance is kind of key to make sure that you're achieving your goals and not doing anything to dissuade the the market. In addition, inclusionary ordinances can require administration and those costs to ensure that kind of a relatively smaller number of affordable units across multiple projects are rented or owned by qualified applicants. So in the development of an inclusionary housing ordinance, there are kind of a there are a few things to to consider. It's important to think about the specifics of the market and 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 what is the appropriate cost associated with and in Lufy that the local market can bear. Also, what percent of units should be required to be affordable to achieve those those housing goals that the city has without avoiding any slowdowns and or pressure on the on the residential market? What projects should it apply to? Currently, of course, it's only pertaining to legislative projects. Which, as I said, can result in some unevenness in in application. And is likely to to continue towards that path based on state directives. But also what level of affordability? So, you know, are we targeting very low and low income units? Are we target, what what are we targeting as far as what are the key goals for the community? What are the other options that that can be provided instead of providing those those units onsite? Cities do have to provide other alternative options, but those options can be explored further. And then again, it's a, it's critically important to provide that in Lufy that is at the appropriate level. And that they can contribute to an affordable housing trust fund. But it's not so low that developers immediately choose it and it doesn't actually create enough money to create more affordable housing. And then finally, the covenant period, the city can determine how long those units should retain, re- remain affordable. The next tool that is is linked linkage fee, linked to afford, to inclusionary housing, but different is what's called an impact fee or a linkage fee. So they're an alternative in, they're often an alternative to a traditional inclusionary housing program. During the time that Palmer, that Palmer case was out there, many cities turned to an impact fee in order to provide that alternative way to get inclusionary housing fees from those rental projects that were coming through. So these impact fees or linkage fees, they're called linkage fees because they attempt to link the production of market rate real estate to the production of affordable housing. So they're not to be confused with those in Lufy's that you, that a developer pays because they are opting not to build those fees onsite. This is independent of that building them onsite. And sometimes flips it on the head where, oh, we'll give you an option to to build it onsite. But the fee comes first in in the in the linkage fee and the impact fee. So the city has the police power to set these these impact fees and place that fee on new development to cover the costs associated with that development to the city. So the, an affordable impact, affordable housing impact fee is generally placed on market rate housing. And a linkage fee is almost as usually termed if that fee is placed on commercial housing. I'm sorry, commercial, real estate, commercial and industrial uses for new development. And so the intent is to say that the commercial development creates a need for affordable housing. The linkage for affordable housing from market rate developments is that the market rate developments create a need for more services, more jobs in the service industry. And thus, it's linked back to the need for more affordable housing. So during the development of any impact fee, it's really important to talk to the development community. Talk to them and about what the pro formas are, about the the land costs and construction costs. So again, really set that that fee at an appropriate level. So looking at what are the pros and cons of of this particular tool? These types of fees are quite successful in creating affordable housing because they create a dedicated funding source to support development. Especially with the loss of redevelopment. Many cities have found this to be a reliable source to contribute to affordable housing in their community. This also, because this creates a new local source, this option does allow affordable housing to be built by a developer with affordable housing experience. So they're experiencing the construction and operation of affordable housing projects, which creates efficiencies for that reason. And this, this option also allows a city to make a significant contribution to affordable housing projects, which often require a multiple layering of different funding sources in order to come to fruition. And also, there can be economies of scale and efficiencies in the development of of larger scale projects and and using these funding sources towards one larger scale projects, making these these projects less expensive on a per unit basis. The drawbacks are similar to an inclusionary requirement in that impact fees. No matter what the the topic of the impact fee are, is that does impact the cost of development and could potentially reduce residential construction if the impact fee is too high. And another consideration is that impact fees result in the investment of affordable housing fees within a few projects in the community, rather than spreading that investment throughout the community. And then affordable by design is our next our next tool to discuss, which can be a really effective tool to support other affordable housing goals, especially when layered with other with other tools. And so you are very lucky to have your own very, your very own affordable by design, which I'm sure folks throughout the state are going to be citing as as a great opportunity. And in general, affordable by design means that the the project is designed in a way that the units are just functionally more efficient to create. And thus are more affordable and that affordability is passed on to the purchaser or the renter. So the the pros and cons, the pros in general, the pro is is kind of inherent in what what it is, it is lower cost. Those savings and costs are then passed on to to the consumer to enjoy the the affordability. Administratively, it's very simple. There's no additional tracking that the city needs to then do. So there's less administrative costs from a city's perspective. And and it's quite flexible. These can be integrated into more complex developments. They can be their their own standalone, like the 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 Grand Oaks project. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility that's that's associated with this model. A few of the cons to consider. It does rely on a developer to be interested in this type of housing model. To encourage a substantial number of units, certain incentives or requirements may be necessary to really move the needle on creating affordable housing. There is no assurance of long term deed restricted affordability associated with these. So, you know, prices may eventually or may even more near term jump up to levels that are considered unaffordable as the market goes up. And as as preferences change for for smaller unit sizes. This model also doesn't effectively create the very low and low income units that are really the hardest to achieve. So while it is highly effective at at creating a moderate income units, it's much less effective at creating those very low and low income units that that are of the highest need. And then topography, you know, one of the kind of key considerations is that affordable affordability by design often relies on the the ease in replicating a very simple design type, which given a Tascadero's a topography, might be more difficult to replicate on a on a broader basis. So some of the key considerations for affordable by design, there, there are a few ways to consider incentivizing or requiring affordability by design. One is to to require a minimum density to 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 increase the to decrease the unit size by increasing the number of units. The city has in the HDR zone, I believe there's a minimum density already on the books. Fractional density is another consideration where a unit is, a smaller unit is considered a fraction of a unit. So that it's a way to to provide an incentive to provide more units. And thus, again, effectively shrinking the unit size to get to that affordability by design. Some jurisdictions place a maximum unit size and just force in that that. So it it might not be a maximum unit size total, but maybe it's an average maximum unit size that you spread throughout the development. There's some incentives too of considering lower fees for smaller units. So really linking the fees associated with a variety impact and and other fees really directly to the size of a unit, either on a square footage basis or on a number of bedrooms basis. And waiving fees for affordable units, many jurisdictions will do that in order to encourage more affordable unit development. So that was a lot of discussion, that was a lot of information. So I wanted to pause and see if we had any questions before and, but I also wanted to 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 start a little bit of a discussion too about what are, what are your key goals? What do you want to achieve out of an inclusionary housing program? So I'm here for questions and start thinking about about that key visioning kind of question.
Okay, thank you, Genevieve. I think what we want to do is I want to go through questions from the, I see some of the attendees starting to put in the chat. If you could hold on that because we'll come to public comment as soon as we finish with questions. So what I'd like to do is go through the commission and the council and see what questions we have of Genevieve be thinking about what we might want to include in in this kind of what our considerations are and what our goals are. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back and deliberate on, you know, what sort of guidance we want to provide. So let me look to the commissioners first. Are there any of our planning commissioners with us? If you want to just like raise your hand, I can see everybody on the screen. Anybody who has a question at this point for Genevieve or Director Dugsmore. Okay, I don't think I'm seeing any questions from the commission. Okay, so council, any questions from council? And I see council member Borbo and Funk both unmuted, council member Funk followed by council member Borbo.
Okay, thank you. First, you mentioned that the lack of large parcels, that 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 many of our large parcels like the Dove Creek and Los Lomas and the lakes have been developed. Could you talk a little further about the implications of of that for where development can occur and which types of affordable housing can more easily be accommodated in the available spaces that are likely to be further developed or redeveloped?
Yes, thank you. One of the key things about those larger areas of land is they they were developed as specific plans. So they, they're legislatively acted on. So that's one of the key linkages. So this, so fundamentally, and how the process works, there's not a lot of those options moving forward to provide a large area that is specific planned. And 20% of those are going to be affordable. So that's the key consideration. With regard to just development and economies of scale, it's tends to be more efficient to provide affordable housing when it's a little bit larger. So even HCD in the housing element has us look at sites that are, you know, at least half an acre and less than 10 acres. Because the average affordable housing, looking, especially looking to seek tax credit financing is, you know, looking to achieve some economies of scale to to reduce the per unit cost. So there's kind of a sweet spot of not too big, not too small that really does support affordable housing development just in general. Which is not to say that it can't be produced on on other more nuanced and particular sites as well.
Thank you. The you mentioned on the impact fees or or that that impact fee option or or the second name it had, the linkaging. Do, are we, would be required to place it on commercial properties if we place it on on a larger homes?
Good question. No, it can be just, sorry, Phil, did you want to answer?
Oh, no, go for it. You're good. I was gonna jump in if you weren't. You beat me to it.
Yeah, I love it when you jump in. Go for it.
I was just gonna say it's completely up to the city council's discretion as to how they would want to craft any kind of an impact fee like that. So that's, that's wide open for discussion.
Okay, and then I did not really track the implications of fractional density. So if you could elaborate a little on that, that'd help.
I can elaborate on that that too as well. There's several other cities in our area that utilize that. And what that means is, for example, let's say someone wants to do a studio apartment and a one bedroom and a two bedroom and a three bedroom in the same project. Generally, what they would, what these other cities do is they say, okay, that's three bedroom unit is worth one or 1.25 units. The two bedroom might be worth 0.75 units. The studio apartment might be worth a half a unit. So what that does is incentivizes these smaller units. And you can get more smaller units on a property with the same density. And that's a very common practice to do that. They do it by bedroom count or you can do it by unit size or both.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Regarding the state density bonuses and how those are counted. The state density bonus in the in the report indicates that it requires or maybe under some circumstances, I'm using a state density bonus, requires them to have deed restricted units for 45 or 55 years. With, how does that kick in? I mean, if if they meet certain requirements, they get a density bonus under state law. Does that automatically mean they have to provide units, deed restricted units? Or is it only if a certain other set of circumstances apply?
So if they are activating the state density bonus ordinance, those terms would apply. So if they are So if they are seeking to get a density bonus, increase their density. And in order to do that, they're also providing some affordable units. Those affordable units will be required to comply with state density bonus ordinances. Which says 45 years for 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 sale units and 55 years for rental units. That number has changed over the years. Probably 15 years ago, density bonus ordinance said it was only 30. And that has increased some. And so it's also up to the city to on on an inclusionary policy, on a local policy. City can set their own level duration of affordability. Some jurisdictions say that rental units have to be held in perpetuity affordable. Some sorry, go ahead.
Well, but if a developer is is doing it based solely on the state density bonus rules, they'd have to comply with state law. Whether if like we only acquire 30 years, they'd have to meet the state law if they were. You know, activating a state density bonus.
Correct, right, so if
And so, okay, well, um, and in terms of the state density bonus, is that based? Is that a bonus over what our local need is, or is that a bonus over what the minimums allowed by the state is? Because I know the state has, like if we said we only allow, you know, six units per acre and multifamily. The state doesn't let us do that anymore, right? It would not let a city do that anymore, correct?
So this the state density bonus is just a percentage above what your what your cap is for your zone. So if your zone says 20 units the acre, and it it's a a one acre lot, so you could get 20 units, but then through the affordable housing density bonus, you say you'll provide 35% of those units for affordable housing at the very low and low income level. The state density bonus law would give you a 95% bonus. So you could nearly double your units.
So the underlying local jurisdiction, you know, the city in this case. Their initial allowed density is the base upon which the state density is allowed.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. In regards to affordable by design. So if we, because that's kind of frankly, what interests me most is if we allowed, let's say, and multifamily. If we allowed, in let's in the downtown area, we even allowed a fourth story. But we said, you need, so you can have more units, but we're going to allow you to do because of using the fractional method. Or or as a our own density bonus, say, you know, if you create some four, five, 600 square foot efficiency apartments in your mix, you know, we'll let you do more units. And so let's say we do that. So they do it and it's an affordable apartment. Or in the case of the Grand Oaks Paseo, it's an affordable, single family home. And then those count towards Rena, I take it. But as you noted, you know, given our housing market, five years down the road, road, that $300,000 home might be a $450,000 home and no longer considered affordable. What's the impact of it no long, you know, that home or that apartment no longer being affordable because of market conditions? You know, do we get a demerit and a future arena cycle, or is it just, nope, you got? You got to count it in the arena cycle. It was built in, and that's what matters in terms of compliance.
In in terms of compliance, yes, it's the latter. There's there's which is not to say that, you know, it kind of all links back to what your affordable housing goals are. As far as as whenever we're losing affordable housing. That becomes a concern because you you know, as as population increases, you need a certain amount of affordable housing. And that loss of existing is a concern. We 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 saw significant loss of affordable housing in like the early 2000s. As places lost their deed restrictions and converted to market rate. So that resulted in the increase in in many deed restriction covenants. So it's a consideration, but from arena perspective and estate target perspective, it is about when those come online.
Okay, so if if later, if if they, you know, were no longer affordable, you don't, you're not in any trouble for that. Would it lead to a higher arena allocation perhaps in the next cycle? At all?
That's an interesting question. I don't have a crystal ball on what the next arena is. I would not have guessed that the 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 numbers that we're seeing throughout the state as far as targets which have ballooned. After the Central Coast got their entire their allocations. So we're seeing fully built out jurisdictions with arena of 17,000. Like very reflective of the state housing crisis and the fact that we are severely deficient in in producing housing and affordable housing throughout the state. But that said, I don't think that the state has a plan or a mechanism for tracking each unit that is not deed restricted moving forward. That's not currently in the legislation. What's in the legislation is tracking those deed restricted ones and concern around when they do convert over to market rate. And a variety of different tools to really encourage more affordable housing of all kinds at this point.
And then, and it's speaking of the deed restricted and counting. And throughout this, you know, the staff report and your report. You did mention the Avenida Maria, you know, the farm worker housing that counted as 59 units. Develop not through the result of our inclusionary housing ordinance. And those counted as affordable units, but what about people self-help housing when they build? Especially the sweat equity homes. My understanding is that they, you know, that those are built with sweat equity. So the the personal investment on the part of the family occupying maybe, you know, their cost basis may be very low, like, let's say, $200,000. And so it's affordable housing, but they're not deed restricted. So do they not count at all? It seems to me they should count at the beginning just as much as an affordable by design. Or do they not?
Um, I I'm not familiar with the people self-help model, but if it were some of the the similar models that I've seen with Habitat for Humanity. We are able, yeah, we are usually able to count that towards Rena targets. It's a matter of of how the city wants to track those those costs moving forward. So it is, it is administratively a little bit more difficult because there's there's no easy mechanism for for ensuring that that folks are are actually renting or selling those those units for the the costs that they say that they are going to. But I would say that those would fit readily into those affordable categories.
And and speaking of that, you know, keeping track of things. If we have like Grand Oaks Paseo affordable by design, because it is presumed that they're going to sell for, I'll say, $300,000, an affordable number, 350,000, something that's considered affordable. That's what was stated in 2019 or whenever they came forward with a as a project. But, you know, here we are in 2021 and they go on the market and guess what? They sell for $400,000. You know, they're not long term deed restricted, or is there any commitment on the upside on on, you know, first year's apartment rent or first, you know, or initial out of the box selling price? In order for it to count, or is it just we we count it when the project came through and there was an estimated sales price?
Yeah, I mean, I think I think that depending on the jurisdiction, that everybody's probably doing it a little bit differently. Because there's no clear guidance about how how that should be done. So you have some discretion on that. And it is likely going to be linked to that entitlement and building permit and what happens at that time. Because after that, the city doesn't really have a process for for considering it later on. Feel feel free to jump in if you have another thought on that.
No, that's, yeah, that's a tough one. I don't know. There's always some unanswered questions along that end and
That's all right. I was wondering, trying to figure out how the state counts and doesn't count things. Because that that affects what our best policy option is. Last question is, I had it, I'm losing it. I better get it back here real quick. Oh, does the state in its process? What I see is, you know, we all like the American, well, most of us grew up, you know, a long time ago. We all love the idea of the American dream of owning your own home. And but to be realistic. You know, forcing developers to provide affordable housing just raises the price for everybody else. He was buying market rate. But is there any requirement on the part of the state that allowing or for, you know, the creation of minimum number of low and very low affordable units, that any of those have to be single family? Or can you focus your effort on what might be more realistic in term would be in terms of providing more multifamily units, either preferably affordably affordable by design. But but, you know, focus on the multifamily where, you know, for $100,000 worth of subsidies, you might get, you know, two units versus for every one you would trying to subsidize a single family.
That's a good question. So the the only parameters that are in the legislation at this point. As far as density bonus, which often correlates to many cities' policies. Links to whether it's for sale or for rent rather than multifamily, single family. Because we understand that the household earning very low or low incomes might not be able to support the additional costs or have the financial buffer to support a for sale unit. And we don't want to set up people to fail. So the the requirements can be different for for sale and rental products. But to your point about the more that you can get, the more efficient we, you know, it seems like you're advocating for for more efficiencies out of the available funding that that exists.
Yeah, I mean, or out of the available subsidies that we're forcing. You know, the developer to offer if if that is what we do. Although I would gather that affordable by design, if you provide enough incentives, incentives. You could you could reach affordable by design.
Yeah. So in the end, yeah, the state is not going to mandate us to put all sorts of different house size categories in our matrix for our affordable policy. But typically, what a lot of these affordable housing policies do though, is when someone is building this series of houses. And they're required to build affordable units. Most cities will ask that they don't make the affordable units, the tiny inferior ones over here on the side. That they make them similar to the rest of the homes and the project is a very common way that's done. But the state, by all means, does not mandate that sort of thing. That's mandated at our level, at our city local level.
Well, that you know, generates another question. I know I said it was my last one, but in terms of that process. So, you know, I'm a developer. I'm developing a 20 lot subdivision. And so I've got to set aside what four units. And we're saying that by policy. We don't want me to have, you know, four 800 square foot houses in a neighborhood of 2,500 square foot houses. But obviously, to provide similar sized houses, you know, costs a hell of a lot more money. You know, raises the price of all the other houses in the neighborhood. What's the premise of that? Because I mean, if, and and who, like, my question is this, how how are the purchasers of of these deed restricted homes generally selected? Because on the one hand, hey, it's a great opportunity to get a house cheaper than other people are getting it. On the other hand, they're not going to accumulate all of the gains in equity. You know, because there's a limit there. But how are they selected? Because my impression was there was a lot of people wanting to do this. And it was almost created a lottery effect of a small number of people lucking out on a few and a very small number of affordable units.
It is often a lottery and an application process. But oftentimes with these affordable housing projects, the qualifications are 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 difficult to meet because they have to have enough for the down payment to make the financing. But at the same time, have to meet the very low income requirements. So it produces a very narrow category of folks that can ultimately qualify for these things. But in the end, it is a lottery. It is a contest. And it's it's a challenge. Yeah, that's part of the administration process that a lot of cities spend a lot of time on. With these affordable housing programs.
All right, thank you both.
So I'm curious, Genevieve, we keep getting back to this, you know. One of the things we unfortunately have to be concerned about is how do we get quote unquote credit from the state? And so when it comes to affordable by design, so if we look at the 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 micro homes project. Those are all affordable units, but we're only getting quote unquote credit for three of them. Or are we also getting credit for the live work units or only just the three, it looks like, based upon the information here?
So what I was providing, the information is really just those three units that are provided through the inclusionary housing policy. What the city will report to the state, assuming that those units come online, and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong. They'll report, you know, assuming those come online and meet those median income requirements. At those thresholds, the city will report those back to the state as moderate income units.
That's correct. And really, in order to keep doing this, though, to keep saying that, hey, we want to look at these affordable by design units and make, you know, have them meet specific affordability categories, we really have to do a rent study. To really justify to the state that these certainly are going to maintain part of our affordable housing stock. You know, at that level, and that's that's what they're going to want. I think the state in the last few years really is in this transition beginning to allow us to include these affordable by design units. Previous previous years, it's always been deed restriction, and now that flexibility is there. But we're definitely going to have to begin to justify it.
Okay, yeah, that is a conversation we started two years ago wondering, so it's it's encouraging that the state is is open to this because you know, I I mean, I think this is, that's one of the most ideal ways to go. And while you might lose, you know, something on one end. You're also helping someone build equity and get out of low income or moderate moderate income, whatever you call it. But actually start building equity and building some wealth for their family and future generations. So there's kind of a trade off, but the state doesn't seem to care about the one. They just care about the the more immediate one. So it sounds like from when Councilmember Borbo was asking about the state bonus, it sounds like maybe the only thing different that the city would offer, because it my my sense is we probably wouldn't go more extreme. We're not going to give 150% density. 95%, I'm a little, I don't I don't remember seeing that in this report, so I'm a little shocked at 95% bonus. Would the only tool that we might have at that point is to say that it needs to be kind of spread throughout, so it's not like, oh, here's the low income area of this development over here. And then here's all the the nice homes.
That's a good question. So with with regard to the state density bonus ordinance, and I think this is something that'll come online to the planning commission and city council, Phil, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that was part of your SB two grants to look at at updating the city's existing density bonus ordinance to make sure that it complies with with the state law. And there are a few things that that will come to you for consideration. I think there's there's interpretations, and I think we'll have to look at what those requirements that the city actually has the discretion to put into that ordinance are.
Thank you. I think that was it. And then people self-help housing, just to close the loop on that, Phil, they counted from the get go. But then they don't have the deed restriction, which I mean, that's how it is for moderate, correct? Even with the deed restriction, it only lasts that first once would almost, why even have the deed restriction in the first place?
Yeah, the moderates, once they sell, they can, you know, they we have the option of taking those out of that program. It's it's kind of loose. It is. It is easier going the way that works with moderate. Yeah, they can fall out.
But we get that initial credit, and it's really still weird to say credit because we still meet our arena. We're talking in theory, credit for building them, but we're not required to build them, at least not now. Okay. Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I just wanted to alert you, Madam Mayor, that Commissioner Karanza
Council had any other question. Thank you. And it looks like I'm not seeing any other questions from the council right now. So Commissioner Karanza, I did see your note that you have some questions.
Yeah, just getting familiar with, did my questions get answered by the council's questions? And are we going back and forth? Anyhow, well, I had three questions that are unrelated, but I had written down and following along. written down and following along on the PowerPoint presentation, but I didn't quite see from what's reflected in the agenda packet. The first is around rehabilitation of existing housing units that are vacant and in poor physical condition or otherwise inhabitable. I was wondering, do we have a study now that identifies how much of those existing housing units? We could do alternate onsite construction for and whether or not the state would allow that to count for anything like blighted private properties, basically. So I was curious about that.
We had, oh, sorry.
We don't currently have a study on on that unless, correct me if I'm wrong, Genevieve, unless we had that with the housing element in terms of blighted or vacant, I forget.
Just a little bit. We back in the housing element, we talked to the building official, we talked to code enforcement to get a number of what we what we call substandard units. So we were asking, you know, how many, how many have you red tagged? And if I recall correctly, he said, we just don't have any. You know, the the code violations that we have are about, you know, not bringing your trash cans in, there might be some structural code violations, but they're remedied. And so my recollection, and I would have to go back to triple check that in in the housing element, but we did report on that in the housing element, the the estimated number of substandard units. There's other census metrics that we sometimes use to try and figure out that a little bit too about how many units don't have, you know, a bathroom or a kitchen or I think it's usually a kitchen, but so that's another factor. One of the key things, though, in considering that rehab is that it would need to, in order to to count, it would need to have a deed restriction associated with it. At least that's the way that it's it's written into the into the code. I'd have to double check about if we then brought it online as a moderate income count household house if it would if it would count.
Now, that reminds me, there's some projects actually very similar to this that are happening now. In fact, we reviewed an apartment project today at the Design View Committee where they're rehabilitating the entire apartment project, building a second story on it. And they're going to deed restrict it as affordable units, low income affordable units. And there's a second one in South Atascadero that we're looking at as well. So we're actually looking at two apartment projects that are going to do just that very thing. The Housing Authority is doing those projects and they're utilizing the density bonus, state density bonus law to get parking reductions and and then and in turn de-restrict all of the units and those properties that today are existing units, but are not de-restricting, but they're existing habitable units are just making more units on the property and making it better. So this does actually happen in our city quite quite frequently.
What is that project called that went on the meeting today?
So that one today is the Empire Apartments and that is on our D A Avenue, not far from the downtown. And there's another one called Macadero Apartments in the south end of town. And both of those projects are moving forward now with review at the Design Review Committee and Planning Commission.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And I guess to I guess further that question, is the city using any affordable housing like admin funds to support those projects or they're just reviewing them?
We're just reviewing them. So those aren't requiring any city involvement at this time. But if they do become part of our affordable housing program, then we will likely need to administer those units as they either sell or as things happen. Properties. So we certainly do have many other properties that we use administration for. So it's definitely, we're already doing doing that quite a bit. I think our housing programs administrator is probably on speaking as well, Linda, who works for our finance division. So.
Okay, my other question, I didn't hear it specifically, and I tried to Google it as someone who was maybe interested in the program and I couldn't find it other than this packet was the shared equity purchase program. I don't understand what that involves and if we're doing it currently.
So Phil, I think that is linked to the inclusionary housing program. So whenever whenever one of those inclusionary units turns over or sells, they participate in that shared equity program. So a portion of the equity can go to the the homeowner, but a portion of the equity, so the how much the delta between how much it sold for when they sold it versus bought it, that goes back into the pot for the community, back to the city to to put into to future equity for for future owners. So that's all linked to the inclusionary housing program, I believe.
Yeah, so they don't really apply for it. It kind of just they fall into it if it if if they're already in a unit that they I don't know. Okay. Okay. And then I guess the last thing was it is kind of on the last page and it caught my attention and I was just thinking, well, how nitty gritty does this actually need to get from our standpoint of what we're talking about tonight where it says establish design regulations that support higher density development by encouraging community parking and open space rather than focus on private garages and yards. And I guess this one really hits home for me because it's around establishing a better quality of life for the people that are living in these high density zones. And as someone who lived in a very high density apartment complex part of my life, it would have been nice if there was some more focus on that. So.
And just to follow up on that, I think tonight we're really looking with the higher level of questions and what do we want to achieve with our program and understand what's working or not working with our whole program and and give those broader higher level bits of feedback so that we can go back and do some more work or not.
Are you complete, Commissioner?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, we we have set aside two hours for this, and I think we're going quite a bit long here. So I want to keep us moving. I certainly want us to get our questions answered and do what needs to be done, but let's open up to the public right now for public comment on these on this topic here. Or anything obviously related to the inclusionary housing program that or process that we're going through. So I will look to the hands being raised. And I see Mr. Ted Lawton. So you'll have three minutes for public comment and Luke, if you could put the timer on, that would be helpful. So Mr. Lawton Lawton followed by Morgan Benvenido.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Hello. Ted Lawton with Cal Coastal Properties and we are the ones who are doing the affordable by design project. And Genevieve, I just want to say what a wonderful presentation this evening. You did a really good job providing a framework. I wish I had half an hour, hour to talk to you about this because you know, affordable housing is near and dear to our heart. I guess the good news is I want to address first off the bat is the moderate housing. So basically, the county sets the standards for affordable housing based on income limits and requirements. And the good news is for the city of Atascadero, based on your real estate market, all other markets in San Luis Obispo County really drive that that moderate income price up. So the so to say that one of the affordable by design units in Atascadero would ever exceed that moderate price. I think historically, if you look back, I don't think you'll ever see a case where that would occur. So the good news is for all of the moderate affordable by design units that you guys build over the years, I think they will continue to be able to qualify for that that income threshold. So I think that's that's good news for you. Again, that's because other cities like Pismo Beach and Avila, they basically bring that medium price way up. And cities like Atascadero and Paso can benefit because of the fact that the real estate in those areas sell at a lesser per square foot price. It's very unlikely that over the years that you'll see the price escalation. I wish I had more time. The other things I'd like to mention are, I think in California, we've really dealt with affordable housing with one solution. It's a you know, for low income housing, it's rental base. I think that we've got it backwards. I think that we need to understand housing from the occupants' perspective. And rental housing is actually the most affordable form of housing for occupants. And then as far as tool goes, if you want to get to that very low and low, if you want to provide more of that type of product, you have to start looking at other types of housing like modular would would be a good option just because of cost, cost, you know, points and you know. So I've studied, I've studied it, you know, intensely. And I understand you could only build a stick home for a certain like traditional stick home for a certain amount, right? Anything below that, you have to use different types of products. So what I recommend to the city is be able to open up that tool, you know, if you will, those tool opportunities to other forms of housing. And anyways, I'd love to be able to contribute more. I've got like 20 points to make, but I think those are probably the five most salient points that would be beneficial for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. And always feel free to email just and as well as anyone else, feel free to email those over to us.
Sure, will do.
Thank you. And next up, Morgan Benvenido.
Hi, this is Morgan Benavito, People Self Help Housing. How is everybody doing this evening? Want to thank you, want to thank you, Mayor and members of the council and the planning commission for having this discussion. Really enjoyed working with Phil and his staff on our apartment project called Del Rio Ridge on El Camino. And really enjoy you guys taking affordable housing serious and looking for options and tools. As far as inclusionary goes, it is a tool that people self housing are very familiar with. We have worked with developers in helping them meet their inclusionary requirements. So I think a well crafted inclusionary ordinance is part of your basket of tools for housing. As your previous speaker mentioned, there's a lot of different housing needs from rental to homeownership and a variety of housings, what's important. In this case for inclusionary, if you have a good inclusionary ordinance, the developer can choose to build it. We have worked with developers that donate land to us and then we build it because they don't necessarily want to deal with the affordable requirements. They can pay in in lieu fee and then we can take that in lieu fee and leverage it. And that's actually what the city has done with us and our project has contributed some new funding. We'll go leverage that and bring other funding in to complete the project. And so I think it offers a variety of tools. And so if it's done right, it can provide the units that you're looking for without overburdening the the market rate development and also give them options for satisfying it. So we're happy to be a partner in that, happy to be a partner to you and and staff and talking about other and you know, affordable housing tools that we've seen that work. So just want to let you know we're available and and thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Benavito. Anyone else wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any others at the moment. I will ask if we have anyone on the phone. Luke?
No, we have the one caller right there at the top. If you're calling in from directly on the phone and you want to speak, go ahead and hit star nine on your phone and that'll raise your hand. And we'll know that you'll want to speak on this item. Again, that is star nine if you are calling into this meeting.
And then I will ask for City Clerk, if we have any email feedback that is to be read into the record this evening.
We do not.
Okay. Not seeing a star nine, I'm gonna public comment going once, wanting twice, any hands? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back. And I believe Genevieve and Phil, you might have some sort of an exercise for us.
Actually, I have a question. Do you mind if I have one quick question?
You cannot ask a question, Mark. Your time is done. Go right ahead.
I never know if you're serious or not. Okay. Actually, it's a follow up on what what Charles was talking about. Charles and Susan both asked some really good questions and answered most of mine. But Charles mentioned, if you have a 20, like a 20 lot some project that you're doing and you've got 20% that you have to do is, you know, inclusionary. So you're going to mix maybe these really small houses in with larger houses and how that might work and and you know, the thing that came to my mind as a designer is I'm thinking, is it possible in this, even it might be single family lots to 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 build a like a duplex, which would now multifamily, but on a single lot and and you're you're getting your your density in that way. But are they half, are they with a point five versus versus the one? And how how does that work? Is that a possibility? Is that an option to be able to do that?
That's a good question. And the answer is a little bit nuanced too. So there's there's some require, there's some allowances that already allow for. So the ADU ordinance allows for something kind of similar to that to happen. So every lot that that as long as it complies with the city's ordinance and has sewers. So there are certain limitations in Atascadero with with the septic requirements too. But for those lots that do are are able to meet those requirements and can have an ADU on the lot also can have a junior ADU as well. So effectively three units that junior ADU is part of the is carved out of the the main building. So that's in effect, that is one option. We are also seeing increasingly throughout the state and the country lessening of the the single family requirement on single family lots. I think Berkeley, most recently, is is moving away from singular single family requirements and allowing a duplex or a triplex. So more more kind of those traditional slightly denser, small forms of development on single family properties. So that is something that we are seeing throughout the state and the country. I think Minneapolis might have been the first one to do it a few years ago, but it's definitely something that cities are considering.
Okay, just the reason I was I was saying that is because, you know, like Charles, you know, you have a, say, a 2,000 square foot house, you know, several around the neighborhood. And then instead of one small thousand or 800 square foot, it's it looks like the same size and the same the design. So you look at it, you don't know it's a duplex. You go, oh, it's got, okay, I see two front doors. Now I notice it. And so it blends in a little bit more and it gives the lower income houses the opportunity to blend in much better. That was my.
Yeah, and the same thing can be done with a primary unit and accessory unit. Today, with our zoning standards right now, you can do that on any single family lot as long as you can meet the criteria for wastewater and you're not in a significant fire hazard zone. And along the like, so it's already, that's already in place, really. And a matter of fact, we are able to really consider accessory dwelling units if they're smaller as a moderately affordable unit now as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just to note, we did receive the council and staff who did receive some input. It wasn't, he didn't send it in as public input, but Max Stappas, who was on the line, I don't see him anymore, but he did send in and his input was, you know, along more along the lines of the affordable by design and a great concern about the the other ordinances, the inclusionary or the fees making it, you know, too too much of a burden on development. So that was his input for us. Okay, with that.
I think he also mentioned, oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right.
I think Max also mentioned about support for the fractional sort of calculation of density.
So I will turn it over to the two of you for some fun now.
Thank you. Now, yeah, we'll we'll start to talk about some input and get some direct, fill out our whiteboard, right, Genevieve?
Yes, thank you. I was, I'm sorry, I was just adding in some of the comments. That's me and Kelly are typing away to try and record the the public comment and we'll also want to record your comments here. Just to just to kind of help facilitate the discussion, we can all see those comments and reflect back on them a little bit. And so the key questions that we wanted to get back to, we can, we can drill down a little bit on those particular tools, any, anything that, you know, we can riff off of from the larger question about what are the key things that you as a council and a commission want to achieve with an inclusionary housing program? And I know it's a big question, but I'm gonna throw it out there to start. What what are you looking to achieve? Is this about, is this about meeting the arena? Is it about making sure that the kids who grow up in Atascadero can live in Atascadero in the future? Is it about making sure that affordable housing is you know, spread throughout the community? Is it, is it about rectifying exclusionary policies? What are those key goals that you're trying to achieve out of this? Because that can help us understand some of the tools.
Can we actually just say yes to what you said and be done?
All of the above.
Sounds good. But you you brought up something, Genevieve, you asked if we want, you know, Atascadero is growing up here to be able to afford to live here. I think. I think many people would like to see that happen, but I don't know that. I mean, just making affordable units doesn't guarantee it goes to Atascaderos. I mean, you talk to realtors right now and who's buying up our property, but Bay Area and Southern California people who are like, oh, I can work anywhere now. And they're coming and they're paying over market. And so, you know, and that's, that is the free market. That's how it works. And so you have some people in Atascadero who are doing great. They're making, they're making some good money off of selling your home. The thing is, it's not going to somebody here. So we can want that and, and, and say that that might be a nice aim, but I don't know that this policy helps us get there unless there's something that we don't know about.
I mean, so if, you know, if, if it is about targeting, you know, locals, there, there are, as part of policies, you can have local preference too. So there's, there's things to can, that you might want to consider moving forward if those are your goals that you want to highlight.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I will, we don't typically do the yellow hand raised, but I'm going to give, go with the yellow hand raised. Commissioner Carranza was the first one, so I will go ahead and, and go to you, Commissioner. You'll need to unmute.
Thanks. I feel like you get to, that's like your main job at every meeting. You're muted. Yeah, anyway, I was going to echo something you said, Mayor Moreno, earlier, which is about, I think you said bridging the generational wealth gap. And that's, that's something that came up a few times when I was reading over the packet. And I think would be like a higher level thing that we'd like to look at. And so I just want to bring that up.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I want to achieve a number of things with this. One of them is that issue of people growing up here being able to have a future here. That means both the opportunity to build a job and a career and, and the, the housing stock at different levels so that they have a chance to start somewhere in ownership and be able to move up and, and see a way forward to raising a family here in this community. That also, it, but, and, and maybe some local preference would help. But we also need to think about that in terms of being, if we want to attract businesses, we need to be able to have people living here who have, who are early in their careers as well as people who are more established. And that means, you know, cool, fun places for people starting out to be able to live and get going, whether those are ownership or rental. Both of those are sort of affordable by design group. We also have other constituencies that we need to meet. And the two most important ones for me are low wage service workers, many of whom work here but can't live here. And we want to kind of get a little closer towards the idea that people who live here can work here and people who work here can live here. And then the other group is that we need to accommodate permanent supportive housing for people in our community that aren't going to be able to be self sustaining, but need, you know, at least not generate enough an income to be self sustaining, you know, for any one of a variety of reasons. But we need more places that people can live on, on an SSI check or on very low, in, in various, with a substantial subsidy and with some supports wrapped around to support a mental health or addiction issues or whatever the things are that are limiting those folks so that we can get them out of, of the creek bed and the Salinas and into places. Our long-term homeless need that kind of, of things. And those kinds of units need to be together so that you can have some support attached to them. And they don't work well scattered through the community. But you don't also want one neighborhood of the community to have all of those places. You want those projects to be scattered around.
Okay, so then let's keep in mind, we are talking inclusionary housing policy. So this, like, we can talk about, like, things that each of us individually might see, but to say, we as a council and commission want to go have these things built and have this be a priority with this, that's a pretty, pretty big thing to get to some agreement on tonight. So I just want to keep in mind, like, let's keep this higher level inclusionary, what are these things that we want to accomplish with what we're talking about tonight?
Sure. So if the implications of that are that we need to have, if we, a policy that supports a variety of solutions that target different segments of the affordable hair, housing market.
Understood.
Demand community. I think, I would also say that, that ADUs are a good mechanism for us and that's something we should can use to support.
Again, that stuff already being done. And I know it's hard because we want to go to all the housing options. And so I really want us to stick with these, kind of these three. So Genevieve, I think what you've done is said, what do you want to accomplish? And so we're starting to go all over the board with housing. And I'd really like to pull us back to what we need to do with these policies because we're not talking about ADUs. We all agree on ADUs and we have that going, but I don't think that's what we're looking at here. We want to look at the inclusionary policy and the three things that you've set before us. Could you narrow us in a bit before we all start going all over the place on the housing element?
I think that's a really good point and thank you for pulling us back to it. So I think some of the, the key things that, that I heard from Councilmember Funk about that we can elevate to the discussion about inclusionary housing to these goals about a variety of different housing types and variety within a structure. So meeting different needs, not just meeting the needs of our moderate income households, but the breadth of that, of, of the needs. So, and I think I heard also spreading the projects through town is also something that you are looking to achieve.
Councilmember Funk, does that, do you feel like she's captured what you were trying to say, kind of at that level of trying to achieve something with the inclusionary policy?
Yes, I think, I think that'll do.
Okay. And then I did see Commissioner McIntyre had her hand raised. And then I'll go to Mayor Protim Newsom.
I think Susan touched a lot on, you know, of the points that I wanted to cover, really a variety of types of housing. Also just, you know, Victoria mentioned just, you know, the importance of some type of open space. And again, I know that isn't really what we're talking about right now, but those, those would be the two.
I want to talk about the other things. I get it.
Yeah, so I don't want to digress, so.
Okay, so for you, variety of housing types for the various income ranges is important.
Yeah, income ranges and multi-generational.
Okay. Mayor Protim Newsom.
I'm across the board of just, you know, affordability for all income levels, all areas, as I live near the self-help building, housing area. I think those were a great model to get people to really want to invest in their community and really want to invest in their piece of ownership. It's not easy to afford to buy in, so to work with sweat equity, I'd like to see more of that. Work with some of the builders and developers to see what challenges are keeping them from building those ideal projects that we're trying to get into our community. So just really all around encompassing all of the needs for how do we all come together and combat affordable housing in our community and make it happen?
Thank you. Councilmember Borbo.
Find the unmute button there. Sorry. My, my concern is about having an inclusionary ordinance at all. We, I understand Passau does not have one. And yet they seem to have had as much success and maybe a little bit more success than us in terms of meeting Rena numbers. Because my concern is what we're, all we're doing here is we're leveling fees on, you know, and costs on developers so that we can create a few units that are cheaper for other people. And, you know, so thereby driving up the cost for the people buying market rate ones. Because we in California have created this affordability crisis that makes it very difficult for people to housing. And that's primarily because we make it very difficult to build housing. And we as a city, like all cities, have, you know, a negative financial incentive to build more houses and build smaller houses because property tax revenue alone doesn't, doesn't cover it. And, but, you know, we have an obligation to try to make our community available to people at all income levels. But to me, the, probably the best way to approach that is through the affordability by design, creating incentives for developers to build more units. Because the only way you make housing cheaper in the long run is you build more units. And, and when you're in an expensive place to build, that means smaller units. And, you know, that, and that probably means rental units in multifamily settings. That's how you're going to do the most for the most number of people. And you can tailor it to those incentives to get to the low and maybe not extremely low, but to the, more to the low end if you allow smaller units and, and more of them. And so I would look that, you know, we pursue the affordability by design, you know, allowing incentives to developers to have extra units in multifamily settings, especially allow, you know, those who want to pursue things like Grand Oaks, Paseo, allow those kind of things so that, you know, there's a purchase option for, for younger people and people who don't make, you know, don't automatically have a household income over 100K. Because ultimately, these things are, that we're doing, that we've done now with the best intentions, just don't generate a lot. And I don't believe that you can necessarily successfully structure them to generate a lot. And the administrative burden is quite considerable. I am concerned that if you didn't have one and you didn't have in lieu of fees, you know, you wouldn't then have money to support certain other projects. That would be a bit of a concern. But, you know, you, you look at things like People's Self Help House that we are giving $400,000 to or whatever. That will cost the city way, 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 way more money over the years in, in property tax not paid than the amount of money we're, you know, we're subsidizing out of the fund. So my, my preference actually would be to go to affordable by design as much as possible. And to try to create as many options for, for people at different income levels to have a place to, you know, rent or potentially buy.
Thank you. Commissioner Keen.
Okay. I, I get what Mr. Borbo is saying, but I think that we also need to remember when we're talking about these plans that not everyone is coming from the same economic point. And so even at moderate and, and very low levels of affordable by design, there's still going to be people that cannot afford that. And the only way we're going to get very low is if we incentivize it somehow. And if that means deed restrictions, fine. Maybe there's something else we could do to incentivize very low units. But, you know, if you're a, if you're working at Starbucks at $15 an hour, there's just no way that you would be able to afford anything, even at the low income level of affordable housing. It's just not possible here. So, you know, I think we need to keep that in mind that, you know, what, Genevieve, could you actually give us the numbers? What is a very low income? What is a low income and what is a moderate income? Just so that we can kind of get an idea of what that means.
It's 50% of the median is the very low, 80% is low in 120. So what is the median, Genevieve, 60-ish?
I was just going back to the housing element where I wrote it down. So if you give me a minute, I'll look it up for you.
Okay, so, so if it's 60-ish, we're talking about people who earn less than $30,000 a year. That's, that's nothing here. That is, that's actually not a lot less than what I may get my job. And if I wasn't married, I could not afford to live here. So I think we definitely need to keep that in mind when we're talking about our options that if we could just, if we could just affordable design our way out of this problem, we wouldn't even need to have this meeting. So, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Ask Genevieve a question on that. And those income levels you're getting at, what does that translate to in what's considered an affordable rent? I'm assuming about a third of the income level. But, you know, what's considered an affordable for low income, you know, a unit for rent?
I'm gonna, let me, let me ask something here because we're, we're kind of, we're delving into some details. And I think what might be more important is for us to say, hey, we want to make sure that people on a very low income have some options. How do we incentivize that? But if we're starting to get down into what do they make and what's the rent? I don't know.
You're right. You're right.
Thank you. I did see our city manager come on and that usually means she has something to say.
No, I just have the county's numbers ahead of me. But you are absolutely right, Mayor, so we won't even go there. It's available on the website.
All right. All right, any other, let's see, feedback from commissioners and anyone who hasn't, Councilmember Funk, if I could just add for a moment, because I know you, you and Councilmember Borbo always have a lot to say and I really appreciate that because you cover some things really thoroughly. Some of the rest of you who haven't maybe had any input yet, is there anything that you wanted to add to the conversation this evening? And some things that you think are important to, as we're moving forward with this? All right, I'm not seeing any hands. So Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I would also comment that, that the, the much larger homes that, you know, are going to be very attractive to our, you know, friends coming in here from the Bay Area in LA, you know, bit up. Those homes do generate requirements for people to serve them, you know, whether it's so cutting the grass or cutting the hair or whatever. And we need, and I think it is appropriate for us to ask a modest contribution for larger new homes towards the, towards supporting affordable housing within the community. And not necessarily that people have an ownership opportunities, but a place to live for the folks who are providing service. And I think that we can do that at, at a, at a moderate level without disincentivizing the construction of large homes.
So that, to that point, one of the things that the county does, just as an example, is that their affordable housing impact fees are placed only on units that are, I think, larger than 2,200 square feet. So those, those, those impact fees only start on those larger homes. So an example of, of your, of your suggestion there.
I think they just put that in in 2018, correct? They just started doing that. That was a couple, just a couple of years, few years ago.
I think so.
Yeah. And, and I think that having some exemption for the smaller units continues to help us subsidize the affordable by, by design and incentivize that by exempting them from the requirement of sharing a little bit of that load.
And I, I'm not, okay.
If I could, I, I see Ted Lawton's hand up and I don't have public comment going, but if, if Ted, if you're thinking, hey, I really have something germane to this conversation that I think you need to hear, I will reopen all of public comments so that you can do it. So if that is, just go ahead and keep your hand up or I'll, I'll open public comment and ask Luke to bring you on. It seems like maybe there's some information that might be useful to this conversation. You are muted. There you go.
Thank you so much. Tori, I really, I hear, I hear what you were saying and your concern. I guess what I did, I did want to offer, and I'm actually constructing a long email to help shed some light on, on some of the topics that were discussed tonight. But I want to give you good news and I think there is a way to design using affordable for sale units that you can design your way out of the housing crisis. It's going to take a lot of work. It's not an over the night. The, basically what caused this happened over many, many years, over 30, 30, 40 years based on what was planned and what was approved. So in order to get out of it, we're going to have to reverse a lot of what has happened in the past. I did propose a project to the city of Gover Beach where we would sell houses in the hundreds, the 100s, which did do qualify. Uh, where we would sell houses in the hundreds, the one hundreds, which did do qualify for low and very low. Uh, um, uh, pricing compared to housing standards, the county housing standards. I'm gonna send everybody a copy of what that looks like, but I just, I just wanted to encourage everyone that that there is a way, there are solutions. And um, I just really wanted to share that. I mean, there's plenty of other things I'd like to say, but. Just I want to keep it brief.
Thank you, Mr. Lawton. We will look forward to that email.
Very good, thank you.
Because I did open up public comment. If there is anyone else wishing to speak, please do raise your hand now. And if you're on the phone, that would be star nine. All right, I am not seeing any other hands raised, so I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back again. Uh, Councilmember Borbo, I think you are getting ready to.
I I did, I we just wanted to comment on um, yeah, um, Councilmember Funk's uh, comments regarding. What I think is called a mitigation fee. Relative to larger houses. Um, I first heard about that when the county was adopting it. I. Was a little uncomfortable with it because I think, again, it just checks prices of those other houses, but. You know, to the extent that we would need a source of of funds to um. Just perhaps support certain projects, especially on the on the very low end or something. To me, that's a viable. Compromise, if you will, to say, hey, we're we're gonna charge something to very high-end homes, or not very high, but starting at some number like the county does. To help facilitate affordable housing, because those homes do generate a a need for some of the service-based industries that are lower paid. And uh, so anyway, I, that's something I um. Not super excited about, but willing to to think that it might be a a necessary thing. To generate a source of funds, because because overall, I think the by design is going to generate the most. Uh, affordable units for the most uh, people in our town. So, and I am very interested in seeing Mr. Lawton's uh, comments and suggestions, because. Uh, obviously developers want to make money, but they're they're the ones that build housing. Um, they are the ones that build housing, and so they're, what are the obstacles in their way of building more housing? At more income levels is something, you know, we definitely want to get their input on.
All right, um, and I will ask because it is particularly important that the. Uh, that the council be giving not direction, but really what are our priorities? And so, uh, Councilmember Dara, as I haven't heard from you. Uh, yet, if you wanted to provide a little bit of input on the the. What you're thinking in terms of those three options.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm, I have to say that I'm. Very much in agreement with with Charles. I think affordable by design is important. I think it's uh. It benefits the the purchaser, you know, at a lower rate. I mean, at a lower rate because of the design. Uh, when they uh, when they do sell, and that's an opportunity, much more of an opportunity for as a stepping stone to move on to the next. Level up and so on and so forth. So I think affordable by design benefits everybody more than um. Than than other options um, that I've heard at this point.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so from. For my feedback, I'm definitely a a fan of the affordable by design. I think, I think you've heard that from everybody. I, as Councilmember Borbo said, I don't love the fee idea. That is kind of the one I feel like I could, you know, live with if if we needed to do something to. Uh, help provide those very low, but you know, my concern is in California, it is. You know, we've said it, and I won't. Keep going over it, but we've made it far too expensive to do just about everything here. I, my my concern is that those in in either whether it's low, very low, moderate, if they're owning a home, my concern is that they are able to build wealth. I don't think we should try. I I don't like the deed restriction idea because it just, you're keeping poor people poor. I don't think that's helpful. They don't get to participate. In the equity increase, and we're just keeping them where they are, and I I don't like that at all. I think that's, I think it's a horrible thing that's been done. Um, I also think that in that sense too, the city then continues to get property tax. So when we talk about. Ongoing trying to fund the services of the city. At least a little bit to help fund police, fire, recreation, those services that we're providing. And then I think in the report I had seen, you know, one of the options is, you know, incentivizing like waiving fees. Um, as much as I might love to do that, I don't think we can be waiving fees. Uh, we start getting ourselves into trouble in the Tascadero when we do that. Um, I think fees across the board throughout the state are too high. Unfortunately, it is what it is, and we have to cover. The cost of whether it's, you know, whether it's the impact fees or the fees in the planning department, particular impact fees, like. We've got to cover the costs of future um, growth with roads and, you know, the whole circulation system, everything. We can't be. Waiving those fees, so I'd be, so I'm on one end, I don't want to be adding a lot more fees, but on the other end, I don't want to be waiving a bunch to incentivize either. I want to see what incentives are available, and we're gonna have to be very creative, and it sounds like Mr. Lawton might have some of those ideas. Do you want to kind of summarize what you've heard from us, Genevieve, or what would, how would this? How would you like to pull this together?
Yeah, so I was just adding a couple of stars here, but I think, um, and some of these are are a little bit duplicative, and we've heard, I think we've heard. Um, from um. Kind of consistently that there's pretty strong support for um. For affordable by design. I think you've got a great example happening, so I think the question becomes, are there? Uh, what are the next steps associated with affordable by design? And let's see, I'm sorry, just to to one note, uh, um, can you see my whiteboard on the screen?
Not right now, no.
Oh, where'd it go? Oh, sorry. Let me share again.
Oh, I thought you were trying to keep that private.
Private until she was done.
No, I'm so sorry. I've been like, Kelly and I have been putting all the comments in. We thought you all were seeing this. I'm so sorry. Thank you for pointing that out, uh, Commissioner Carzana. Um, so we we heard this pretty clearly, so. Um, thinking about next steps too on affordable by design. What are the next steps for affordable by design that you'd like staff to be looking at as far as um. Incentives or requirements to to encourage that. So I think staff can come, go back, look at some of those um, incentives. And requirements and and come up with some ideas to bring back to you for that. Um, we also heard pretty clearly um, that there is a need to provide a variety of affordable housing levels. Um, you know, I think we heard some that, so we see like historically, we are getting a lot of the moderate income levels. Uh, but we're not getting those very low and low um, income units. Um, and so I think I heard that there might be some support, kind of thinking about ways to develop a funding source to support those. Um, I didn't hear clear direction necessarily on what. Path forward that is, but I I think that there was some consensus around the need for that. Um, as a as a potential funding source to support. Um, there there were a number of folks who talked about the need to provide. A variety of housing levels, affordable housing levels, um, and different types of affordable housing through town.
And Genevieve, I think we'd like to see, I think probably what you're hearing is that we're we're not. We're all in agreement that we need that. We may not be in complete agreement in how to achieve that. And we want to achieve that with as little burden as possible on. Developers who already have a high cost, then just get spread on to everybody else. So what are the options? For making it as a, not just affordable for the people buying the houses, but people that are going to come and build those houses. And I think we talked about that potential um, fee, what is the citywide impact fee, commercial linkage fee? Maybe not citywide, but within there, what are the options? I think you've got some of us that are hesitant to put more fees out there, others that see that as like, we really need to do that. Is there some? Some balance there that staff can bring back to us, and it sounds like, um, from. Mr. Lawton's comment, but comments that there are a lot of affordable by design options for those lower incomes. And I think we always have to remember too, that the people in those lower income and moderate households, like, need to move up, and then they release that inventory, and people move into those homes. I mean, when you talk to economists, they'll say, we've got to build those higher-end homes, because people need to move up into those and have people fill down below, so. There needs to be, there needs to be all of it.
Great, um, yeah, I think, um, thinking about next steps and what staff can do and and kind of moving this process forward. There's a couple of things that are linked to um, to a fee like that, so. Um, it's important to have that done right, with really good input from our local developers, as well as an economist who can. Can price that in the right, at the right category. Um, so if that's something that you'd like to direct staff to move forward with, um, studying, that um, that could be something that we could. Have happen.
Saying the the linkage fee that we're talking about. Impact slash linkage fee, it's sort of a big ball.
Exactly, so the way that I usually do it, I I call the the impact, the affordable housing impact fee on market rate housing, the linkage fee on commercial development.
Okay, so let me get a sense from um, all of our, all of the council members here, where do you stand on? Um, I know Councilmember Funk, you're in favor of that. I think Councilmember Borbo, you said you could. A little, um, trying to get a sense of where the five of us are.
Well, I am concerned about the mention of attaching it to commercial, you know, we want to foster commercial development. Um, I I understand the conceptual linkage to larger homes. Um, you know, if I'm gonna build a McMansion, I'm likely to employ a gardener, you know, a housekeeper, uh, what have you, you know. And I'm, you know, gonna create, or, you know, help to create a need for. Um, housing for for people who are. Working, um, you know, low-wage jobs. So I see the linkage there. On the commercial, I I I don't see it, and I would see it would be a distraction from what we've. Been focused on as a priority, attracting more commercial development.
Uh, council, our Mayor Potem Newsom.
I would agree with Charles Borbo, Councilmember Borbo. I think that we want to make sure that our commercial sector is openly wanting to do business with the city and really helping us get to that level. I think having more um, working relationship with the developers and not adding an additional fee to them is gonna help us get where we need to be.
Uh, Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I want to clarify too that I that I would not support a fee on commercial projects. Um, that's that, we're trying to deal with our jobs, housing imbalance, and that won't help us. Um, I also would like to see us pursue this prod, this in a way that is fair. Um, that um, doesn't, isn't restricted to just legislative projects, but applies. Um, more broadly, um, so. To uh, projects. So that we can keep the uh, the fees low and consistent around the community, whatever we have to do. And um, and also so that we continue to incentivize. Um, expeditious processing of requests to build housing. Um, and that's by not attaching these extra things only to those kind, to projects that. Require those extra steps. I think we can make it easier to just go ahead and um. Keep simplifying the process, make that part of the economic value that we offer to developers. And make the sure that the fees are fair.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Dara, where are you on this?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with pretty much everything that everything was, has already been said. I I don't think the fee should be attached to commercial projects. I think that's most important. Uh, but otherwise, um, whatever, everything that's been said already, I totally am in agreement with.
Okay, so I I think the council has some consensus on that, Genevieve. What would the, what's the next thing you need from us?
Um, so I think there's, there's two things. I think we, I think we pretty clearly heard that. Um, you'd like to see some more information about uh, what an affordable impact fee could look like. Um, so I think you could direct staff to go ahead and do some more research on that. Um, especially about what the, what the different options are, looking at larger homes and where the thresholds are. Uh, and also considering um, ways to apply that, you know, in a in a fair way. Um, and so that would be directing staff to do a little bit more research, and then also take a look at what that economic study would be. To to, for what that impact fee would be.
Yeah, because i- it, what we're looking at, if we're, if we're saying that, like, I mean, I mean, and Councilmember Borbo's point. Paso has built more low and very low income housing than the rest of the county. I think we're we're second, so we've done a pretty good job. Um, and if they've done it without an inclusionary policy, that's fantastic. Um, I think they're also, the way they've done things are a little bit different. I think you kind of have areas that are a little more. Low-income areas, you know, versus not not, I don't think. I think we've done a good job here of spreading it out a little bit more. And how can, are there ways to incentivize that without charging more fees in terms of like an inclusionary? Is there an inclusionary policy that we could have that doesn't? Charge another fee, but somehow, I I don't know what incentive we could offer that the state hasn't already just given away, like. Money. But is there a way for us to somehow incentivize that, you know, spreading, and and again, how many lots do we even have left? And not, not like we're gonna end up with, you know, five, you know, three hundred unit. Low-income places that ends up kind of this area that unfortunately gets a, has a stigma, and and the things associated with that aren't good. For the people living there, um, or the community.
Um, yeah, I don't have a magic answer for that one. Uh, but I think that's, that's, I think, one of the key considerations that staff can can think about as we move. Projects for, uh, as we move something forward for you to consider later on. Um, so I think the the next step of of that that fee study, um, and some of the parameters within that. Along with um, incentives and requirements for affordability by design. Um, I heard, I heard that as well. Um, and certainly working with with your local development community to understand, um, for both of those options. Um, what what works best right now.
Yeah, Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, and I'm encouraged not to think about it as an either or. But but to look at as a both and, that that, we have a a lot of interest in the council. In encouraging affordability by design. But we also have a segment of needs that can't really be met. Um, with that. And want to to create a funding stream that can handle that. Um, and to keep the impact of that as low as possible on developers, so that we don't disincentivize. The forward progress of our community at all income levels. Fair enough, summary?
Yes, thank you.
And I, I mean, unless you think we need two more steps, I mean, I'm kind of like, less is better.
There we go.
There, yeah, there's no pre-designed number, just. Yeah.
Say, in a real bureaucracy, you couldn't leave until the the last two circles were filled in.
And you want to fill in the rest of those other boxes too?
Yeah, yeah, delete those before we start talking about them.
Yep, when you see the final, you'll see all the empty ones are delete.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for the insight and the input. Um, thank you very much.
Absolutely, and uh, thank you to the the public. We had a a good number of people here, at least listening and and watching. And to uh, the couple individuals to both Mr. Lawton and um. Mister Benavio that, uh, from People's Self-Help Housing, uh, for your inputs, and of course, Mr. Dappus that had emailed in to us. We appreciate all of you, any of you listening that have uh, more input that you want to email us, please feel free to do that. Um, thank you to the commission, our first joint meeting with the new commission, uh, so. Uh, welcome, and I know this won't be our last, so. Uh, with that, we will uh, adjourn the special meeting, and the city council will adjourn to its next regular session. On March thirty-third of twenty twenty-one, and the planning commission will adjourn to its next regular session on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Come with that.
Actually, we do have a special meeting for planning commission interviews, right?
I don't know if I have that on the calendar yet. I don't, I don't know if it's before our next meeting or not.
Yeah, I thought it was, that's why I mentioned it, but, all right.
We may or may not have a special meeting for.
Might want to remind all of us of our calendars.
Yeah.
And uh, Genevieve, thank you very much. Uh, I, it's been a good process with you over the last uh, last few years here. It's been a good process with you over the last, the last few years here, so thank you. And Director, thank you. I did see our city clerk come on. Laura, did you want to?
Yeah, the special meeting is actually planned for the 24th, so the day after.
That is.
Yeah.
I better go put that on my calendar. Don't know if it's on there yet. All right, excellent. Oh, yes, it's on there. I knew, I knew.
Just, I I thought I'd point out, too, since we're talking and we have the planning commissioners here, I have yet to receive any applications. So we need some applications for planning commission. So if you, anyone happens to know anyone who might be interested or would like to serve on the planning commission, please, please, please encourage them to submit an application. Applications are due next Friday by 5:00 PM to the city clerk's office.
I think that was the data, data I had in mind. And Laura, I'm thinking that we had some very good applicants that were not selected, and it might be good to reach out to those to, you know, let them know there's a second opportunity here.
Yeah, I was going to ask what happened to the previous applicants, since there's a new opening.
We still, we still have those applications, and if you'd like to reconsider them, we can.
Hold on a second. I adjourned the meeting, so I don't think we're supposed to be having a conversation, Laura. So I just want to be.
Yeah, this is just informational for all of you, since I have you here right now. Saved an email to send out to you just to let you know when your next meeting was and if you know anybody to please. So this isn't discussion on business items, it's just informational.
Excellent, so we will not discuss that. Thank you for the information and good night, all.
Good night.
All right.
Night.